Okay, then I'm going to call the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee Open Meeting of Wednesday, March 20th, 2024 to order. The first order of business is our public hearing for the FY25 budget.
And Becky Palgrino will conduct the public hearing.
I know everyone looks forward to this evening because it is the high point of the fiscal year. So tonight I will read the public hearing on the FY25 budget. The Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee is committed to providing an exceptional educational experience for all students in a cost-effective manner. The district believes that strong partnerships with parents, the community, and the town government are essential in developing a fiscally responsible and educationally sound school budget. The school leadership team and the school committee utilize its budget priorities, the strategic objectives outlined in the district's strategic plan, Vision 2026, and the mission and vision of the district as guiding principles throughout the budget process to develop a budget that supports an exceptional education of all students. Copies of the fiscal year 2025 school committee voted and approved line item budget are available online at the central office, at the Northborough Town Offices, and the Southborough Town Offices. I will be providing a total of the FY25 budget subcategories by function classification as part of the public hearing process. For regular education, Function Classification Administration, the Series 1000, this includes the fiscal audit, treasurer's office, school committee, superintendent, assistant superintendent, district-wide administration, business and finance, human resources, legal services, and administrative technology. This classification totals $722,561. Function Classification Instruction 2000, this includes department heads, instructional technology, leadership and training, principal's office, administrative technology and support for the schools, teacher salaries, teacher specialist salaries, substitutes both long and short term, librarian, media salaries, distance learning and online coursework, professional development for leadership, teacher, instructional staff, and substitutes, tuition reimbursement, textbooks, instructional materials, other instructional materials, instructional equipment, general supplies, instructional hardware, devices, and all other, instructional software, and other instructional materials and guidance services. This classification totals $12,747,110. Function Classification Other Student Services, the 3000 series, this includes health services, transportation, both contracted and other, athletics, and other student activities. This totals $2356,517. The Function Classification Operation and Maintenance of Buildings, or the 4000 series, this is custodial services, custodial supplies, heating, electricity, telephone, gasoline, water sewer, maintenance of grounds, maintenance of buildings, maintenance of equipment, technology, infrastructure maintenance, and support, both salaries and all other. This function classification totals $2,193,835. Function Classification Benefits and Fixed Charges, the 5000 series, this includes the employee retirement program, employee separation, OPEB insurance for health, retirees' health insurance, life, Medicare, workers' compensation, unemployment compensation, and comprehensive liability, as well as rentals and leases. This function classification totals $4,919,604. And then Programs with Other School Districts, the 9000 series, this is school choice and charter schools. This totals $250,000. The total regular day programs for the FY25 budget totals $23,189,528, which is a 2.34% increase over fiscal year 24. For Special Education, the Function Classification Administration in the 1000 series, this is for legal services and administrative technology. This totals $15,500. The Function Classification Instruction, or the 2000 series, this includes supervision, teachers' travel and salaries, medical therapeutic services, professional development, textbooks, instructional technology, and psychological services. This totals $3,412,17. The Function Classification Other Student Services, the 3000 series, this is health services and transportation, totals $612,517. The Function Classification Operation and Maintenance of Buildings, the 4000 series, this is maintenance of equipment for special education. This totals $5,600. Function Classification Fixed Charges, the 5000 series, this is rentals and leases. This totals $1,595. And then finally, the Function Classification Programs with Other School Districts, or the 9000 series, this is tuition out and tuition out collaboratives. This totals $634,669. For a total special education budget of $4,681,898, or a 19.08% increase over fiscal year 24. The total fiscal year 2025 operational budget is $27,871,426. This represents an overall increase of $1,281,80, or 4.82%. And that concludes the reading of the budget.
Okay. So it's a public hearing. Do we have any public that would like to hear anything about the budget? I'm going to ask one question just during the public hearing. So I just want to clarify this because I know that we, every year, we make a big deal that, you know, if we're going to participate in school choice or not. And so the line item that's school choice and charter schools is $250,000. So people might be confused because we don't participate. So what is that $250,000?
So that is to pay the district's portion for students who are residents of Northborough and Southborough who might attend either through school choice or at a charter school.
So that's kids going out?
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
How many of those students do we have?
I would have to get those numbers. I don't know them off the top of my head.
Is the 25% increase reflective of additional students or additional costs in the future?
It's projected for additional students.
Okay, good question. Any other questions? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to the meeting. Okay, first order of business is audience sharing. Can the audience share any from the table? Okay, moving on. Next is action on the minutes. We have action on the minutes of the open meetings of February 28th, 2024. Do we have any corrections, suggestions, questions? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the open meeting minutes of February 28th, 2024.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Paul. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. That looks unanimous. Next order of business is educational policy under this time, and on to new business, legislative update.
Sure, brief update. This past Monday, we did welcome Senator Kennedy, Representative Kilcoyne, and Representative Donahue to visit Northborough Elementary Schools. So we had an opportunity to advocate for our legislative initiatives and also hear from them around what some of the challenges they're experiencing. And also, we asked how we could help them advocate on our behalf. It was a productive meeting. We talked about transportation reimbursement, circuit breaker, minimum local aid, and also we talked about universal free meals and making sure that's funded to its fullest amount. And we did ask if they'd be willing to come to a future school committee meeting and interact with the school committee and share their perspectives. And they said they would be more than willing. And Kate Donahue is going to create a parallel structure for Southborough. So she'll be organizing the Southborough Legislative Delegation to visit Southborough Schools in the next few weeks. So overall, it was a productive morning, a lot of great conversation and insight into the FY25 state budget. Both, so Senator Kennedy is on the Education Commission as well, I believe, as Kate, Representative Donahue, as well, so it helps.
It always helps to have good relationships with our legislators. Okay, next on the agenda is the library department presentation.
All right. I'm just going to pass it over to Kim, our wonderful librarian. It's on her home turf right here today.
Yeah.
So I'll tell you all about this wonderful room and the work they do today together. So take it away, Kim.
It's been a few weeks, so hopefully we'll, you know, explain. So just first of all, over the summer, the librarians, K-12, we got together and kind of formed a mission for us to work through over the summer and kind of guide the work that we individually and collectively do. So this is kind of something I've latched on to, kind of put in print, it's something that we always do to kind of spur me on for the year. So our primary goals here, of course, at the library is to support the curriculum. And we want to do this through thoughtful, careful collection, curation, to make students have, make sure students have access to resources that are reliable, current, and reflect the current course offerings. Reading for pleasure has been something that's been really embraced and incorporated into our English courses. So we know that reading for pleasure is connected to academic success, increased test scores, and increased reading stamina, which is important to tackle texts that you don't like to read later on, so that we really work with the students and the teachers to make sure that every student can find something that really appeals to them here at the library. So we really want to foster that curiosity and make sure that there is something that appeals to their wide range of students and their interests. Here at the library, in our collection, we have over 17,000 items, 2,000 reference books, 9,000 nonfiction that circulate, 6,000 fiction, and we're working to genrefy that so kids can easily, you know, go to the card catalog and say, I want to read a fantasy book, or a mystery book, or a thriller, so we can get books into their hands quicker. And also, 44% of our collection is considered a diverse text, sorry, and 29% is connected to social or emotional learning. Students have access to 80 databases. Within these, there are resources for career exploration, support for SATs, advanced placement tests, and a variety of interests. The GAIL database suite has audio options and allows students to translate the material into over 40 different languages. To increase access, so, you know, we want to widen the breadth of resources for our kids. Every student here has the opportunity to create their own digital account for the New York Times, that they can get access to that daily, even through the summer. And to make sure that students have multiple access points, we encourage them to get an E-card at the Boston Public Library, and we also subscribe to Sora. So both of these resources provide students access to eBooks and audiobooks in a variety of languages. And through the Boston Public Library, students can have access to what's called Biblioplas, Canopy, Hoopla, and Flipster. And these services provide students access to international movies, books, and music. And for students who have disabilities that necessitate the use of audiobooks, they have access to Bard, that's the third image from that, which is provided by the National Library Service for the Blind and Physically Handicapped. And Learning Ally, along with our special ed department, is available for students who need access to audio textbooks. Now, collaboration with faculty to support student learning is, and, you know, the goals of the curriculum is our mainstay, and that's what we love to do the most here in the library. So we help provide tailored instruction and support to expand on specific lessons. And we like to consider the library and learning lab. For many of the classrooms, students come to this space as an extension of their classroom. And it's also a place to collaborate, practice skills, and share knowledge, and apply real-world skills. So the early childhood development class comes, they came yesterday, to read to the nursery school students. And then the urban gardening class has done a wonderful job telling us what all our plants actually are and how to keep them alive. And then we have students from our NAC and TLC programs that have a variety of jobs that they come in and do a few times a week, so they are practicing a variety of skills in the library. And then classrooms, of course, students come down to apply what they've learned in class, look, you know, work with their peers, and conduct, of course, independent research. We are also love to be the home to unique learning opportunities. So since 2018, Algonquin has been visited by the International Visitors Leadership Program, participants in that program, which they are hosted by the Department of State's International Leadership Visitor Program. And this year, we had 15 distinguished journalists from, and they came from India, Nepal, the People's Republic of China, Indonesia, Sri Lanka, Singapore, Thailand, Taiwan, the Philippines, and Fiji. And this year's theme that they want to focus on was the issues of disinformation and misinformation. So we have the day broken down into two parts. The first was kind of a traditional question and answer session, and the students had some great questions, and they asked these journalists, you know, how do you plan, or how do you try and fight disinformation? Did they think the battle could even be won? And, you know, were they concerned that AI might take their jobs? And in return, the journalists asked the questions, you know, where do you get your information from, and how do you know it's reliable? So there was some great back and forth. And then after lunch, we were able to, you know, break down into smaller groups, and they rotated through three different stations. One was, you know, talking about social media, the others, artificial intelligence, and the third was how does the advanced placement human geography courses connect to specific articles that these journalists wrote? So Kristen Turner, who's one of our AP Hub teachers, designed and implemented all the activities for the day, and her partner teacher, Amelia Braun, worked tirelessly to make sure our students were up to par with these international journalists, and they were able to have some really high-level conversations while we were here. Everybody had a great time. The journalists thoroughly enjoyed, enjoyed being here in Algonquin. It is the only high school that they visit while they are here for three weeks. So we are there in impression of American high school, and the common mantra that they all had was, I wish this was my high school experience. So they were very, very impressed by the questions, the level of engagement, and what was being learned. So that was an exciting day last week. Also, we like to use the library spaces and the resources to support learning beyond the classroom and sometimes beyond the school day. So last week, the US1 kids, they're all writing their Civil War paper. So on Monday afternoon, Monday evening, Cass was here, along with the Social Studies Honor Society, they were able to come, access the resources, access the teachers, access support from the Honor Society students, and over 100 freshmen took advantage of that activity. So it was, they all got, it was a wonderful time. Today, fifth graders from Peaslee came over and worked with Brian Kellett's AP Government and Politics class, and they were talking about the executive, legislative, and judicial branches, marrying kind of what was going on in the civics class. What was very impressive is the lessons were written and designed by our high school students, and there were some great conversations regarding the role of government, and which was, and they finally took a vote at the end of which was the most important government, a little portion of the government, judicial one, and they got a little input into how the Electoral College works. And then this year, I've been trying hard to get the message out of what the library can do for you. In conjunction, on the PD day, I ran an Easily Accessible Tech Workshop with Ryan Kalnir, and our whole point was, here's some easy ways for you to have some access to make things more accessible for our students. Everything from closed captioning to the databases, to translating. Gave a presentation to our English Language Parents Advisory Council last week about the resources that were available to their students as well as themselves. So everything from the public library to our GAIL databases that have the career and support for testing, but also language practice. UDL, I was supposed to translate, I didn't translate, participated in today, but emergency dentist. So Alyssa Rosellini from Z-School was able to give the presentation on our bags. And then the last thing, what I started with was the K-12 librarians getting together saying, you know, we really want to build a reading community here in Northborough and Southborough. And so we decided we wanted to come up with a community event, which was the NSborough Reading Challenge. And then we also wanted to have a way to celebrate this. And when we were sitting in the back room in August, we were like, well, if we have 100 people come, we'd be really happy. But in February 6th, we had over 400 community members show up to celebrate reading here in the district, and we're excited, and we're planning to host it again next year, and also to hopefully expand NSborough Reads, Read Across Northborough, to maybe Read Across the Burrows next year, so that we, Southborough, we can all pronounce that. So I want to thank you all for your support. We are very lucky here at Algonquin. Our library has wonderful support of the district and local administration, and of course, all of our students who come and learn in the city.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
I've always enjoyed your work. I enjoy the setting. It feels very comfortable and very welcoming, and I love to flop and read wherever I can. And there are many invitations to that. I'm wondering, in this world of contentious book regulation, if you're getting any pushback about your holdings?
I am not on one. I have not gotten anything.
Okay.
So very lucky.
Yeah, very lucky. It's obviously all around us, but I think that having, I always thought that a library is really like a smorgasbord of just offering the world's knowledge and inspiration to people, and credited the librarians with my doctoral work because they, you open the keys, and so I really thank you for that.
Thank you.
I have a question. What happened to the dog?
Tired, probably. I'm actually babysitting him and his brother right now. So, yeah, Parker and Joanne, we try and get them in at least once or twice a month.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, because there's a lot of kids who come in and say, yes, we have them.
I know. Everybody goes to Parker.
Yeah.
Parker taught you how to wear a mask.
Yes, yes.
Well, I'd also like to thank you, not only just for everything that you do for the library, but you and Mr. Berry, a few years ago, put together a comprehensive history of Algonquin.
Yes.
And of, like, the high school and prior high schools and stuff like that, and it was fabulous. And so I probably have not said this in person, thank you very much for that. That was a wonderful work of, a body of work, and it continues to live on.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just like to comment that if you have a chance to visit the library during, you know, the school day, it's a, it's not your typical library. Kids are engaged, they're studying, they're involved in all sorts of wonderful experiences. I think you've made it kind of the hub of Algonquin, and it's great to see the excitement and energy happening as a result of your hard work, so thank you.
Thank you very much. You have over 40,000 kids coming to the library.
Yes, yes.
They come in the morning. It's really a busy hive.
It is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Hello?
Craig mute, a few mute, Craig.
Do you yodel?
Often, apparently.
Not professionally.
All right, next on the agenda is the FY23 Audit Report.
All right, so we are just, the auditor will be participating remotely, so we are just making sure.
Oh, that's why I was, okay, gotcha.
That's why we're yodeling.
Is he here, or should we do the next thing first?
Just a second.
So Keith, you are the host now. I'm going to leave.
Yes, you can leave, Greg.
Recording stopped.
Okay, why don't we do grants, grants, approval of grants and donations first, and then we'll come back to the audit report. So I tell you what, Greg, or Sean, whoever, why don't you give?
We can start with Stephanie about the genocide.
Stephanie, okay, and then I'll ask for a blanket motion.
So the Genocide Education Grant, this is actually, will be our third time being awarded. We had it in FY23, FY24, and this will be for FY25. And it is supporting continuing professional development around, it helps us to address the new law that we teach genocide education, but then support the professional development for teachers. And this particular iteration of the grant, we will be using to do school-wide anti-bias work with all teachers. So we've already done one level of work with all teachers at the high school, and this will be taking that to a second level and having a second experience for all teachers around anti-bias education, but then also continuing with some specific PD for the Social Studies Department. This is very exciting.
Excellent.
And then the second donation is from various organizations. The librarians across the three districts have been creating a NSborough Reads Community Challenge, and it culminated in a NSborough Reads Community Celebration that happened on?
February 6th.
February 6th, so the library was filled with young readers, and it was very exciting. And many donations were given as a result of people's participation and willingness to join the program, and Kim provided a letter of all those donations in your packet.
Okay. So?
And then Sean.
Okay, Sean.
Yeah, and then we have several letters for various donations that you can see here. One is for $200 from the Northborough Garden Club for our Urban Gardening Club, another which is from the Rhythm Dance Company. That money would be going to the AHERS Best Buddies Chapter, which we have here in the school. Another one from Middlesex Savings Bank of Westboro to the Class of 2025 to offset the cost of the prom. Another donation from various community members to support the harbinger, and you can see them, they're listed in the letter itself. And then donation from Lexus of Northborough to support DECA.
Do I hear a motion for the approval of the FY25 FC 215A Genocide Education Grant in the amount of $16,500, and the approval of various donations for NSborough Reads Community Celebration? The amount of $1,690? And the approval of donation from the North Borough Garden Club to the Urban Gardening Class in the amount of $200? And the approval of the donation from the Rhythm Dance Company to the ARHS Best Buddies Chapter in the amount of $1,317? And the approval of donation from the Middlesex Bank of Westboro to the Class of 2025 for their junior prom in the amount of $500? And the approval of donations from community members in the amount of $660? And local businesses in the amount of $885, totaling $1,545 to The Harbinger? And lastly, approval of donations from Lexus of Northboro in the amount of $500? And the Lammertding Company in the amount of $100 in support of the ARHS DECA program? It's a raise. So moved by John, seconded by Paul. Okay. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? That passes unanimously, and we would like to greatly thank and are deeply grateful for all those people who have donated in any way, shape, or form.
Sean, if you could just disconnect from the Apple TV. So Keith could connect. And I'll turn it over to Becky for an introduction.
Sure. So this evening, Tom Scanlon, our auditor, is with us tonight to discuss the FY23 fiscal audit that his firm conducted in conjunction with the district. The Audit Subcommittee met on Monday night, and we did have some conversation with Tom about the audit, but we did ask him to attend tonight. We do appreciate Tom and his team. They're very diligent. They ask great questions, and I think we have a, a great working relationship when it comes to conducting audits. And so we really appreciate all his hard work in putting this document together. So Tom, if you are ready to, sorry, I'm looking at the TV like you can see me.
And Tom, again, Becky, it's all right. I can just provide a brief summary too of the discussion that we had. So the, as you mentioned, the Audit Subcommittee met on, earlier this week, on Monday, the 18th, with myself and Chris Covino as part of that Subcommittee, during which we, the agenda items that we covered was the review of the 2023 audit, as well as a review of the other post-retirement employee benefit program actuarial report. During that discussion, we, when we went through the financial statements, Scanlon Associates did issue an unqualified opinion on the financial statements of North Borough, South Borough School District of the year ended June 30th of 2023. They also provided an opinion on the, under gas for the fund accounting and making commentary to the fact that we were in compliance in all material specs, respects related to those federal programs and other programs. I guess the, for me, the biggest takeaway in the discussion is, you know, Tom was, he was, he spoke quite favorably just overall as to the finance team, the quality of the accounting records, the quality of the reconciliations, and as well as the quality of the, the overall controls or financial reporting, although in the opinion, they don't opine on the effectiveness of controls over financial reporting, but they do, do some amount of work as part of that audit process to gain some understanding of the control process, and they did not make us aware of any control deficiencies or, or any material weaknesses as a result of the procedures performed. He also did make commentary about just the overall conservative nature that we approach certain fund accounting and use of funds, particularly, and I think we remember this as part of the budget process, our use of the ESAR funds to not create structural budget deficits as a, as a result of the manner in which we use them. The other part of the conversation that we spent some time with was just the, the result of the audit or the, or the balance sheet section of it, it has a net position, which is a, a negative amount of $11,120,000, which on the surface seems counterintuitive, but when you look at the components of the balance sheet, you recognize that a good contribution of that comes from the impact of the OPEB liability, which is about $40 million. And then also the pension liability, which, you know, it was a little bit of like a specific accounting requirement as to the, having the value of the liability associated with these, particularly the OPEB, which is the, the health benefits that we provide to both active and current employees post-retirement. So if you exclude those two items, effectively, we, we have a positive position because the other side of that is also the, the asset itself of the school. So I don't know, Chris, if you have any other commentary, we can hand it, open it up to, to Tom to address any questions that you have.
No, again, I've just, you know, as a layperson, I'm just very impressed with our finance team and the fact that an independent auditor essentially has come in and said that this district is operated in a fiscally responsible manner. So again, I appreciate my, I appreciate the time that goes into generating these reports and the accounting that's made available to the school committee. And I think hearing from Tom would be a good idea.
I'm looking for a good presentation. Thank you. More, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes. Again, yes.
Yeah, I think, you know, we had no difficulty with forming our, like I say, that the financial personnel, the, the, they responded to the risks associated with this, they're constantly asking for this, where it all rely on the financial statements. You get solid control over your key accounts, the cash reconciliation, dispersal, representation, sure, all of that, they're all in the right place. From a risk, a high risk, a risk, a low risk, we like to see. And your grant management is, is solid. And we talked about the FPGRAN, so the, you bring the papers to community, the school district are having some trouble because they're using the ESAR funds, it's not a one-time fund for operating the paperwork. The district really went into assessing the FPGRAN, you know, simply had a, a school decision. And we get to talk about the OPEB, that is your liability on the balance sheet, as far as the company's liability. And I believe you're addressing it, if you can, share a $45 million liability in one budget, a long-term of dollars if I able to get it. But other than that, I can't deep think about the accountability of the school. And school committee, that's what I was wanting to hear, resources added, it's solid, it's accurate, it's a, 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 I don't think any general questions about what we do. You know, you talked Monday, you spend a lot of time at the bank level, you can be looking at your balance sheet, you're kind of second best.
So.
Yeah, you're too big as an asset, you're a cash investment, you're still, you're spending a lot of time, no, there is, make sure you're ready, you know, you have a grant, you know, I think that's a, so what, money is coming in, should be general point of clarity, and you cannot do it in, but, 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 so some of the things that you do in the audit.
So Tom, I have, I have one question just to confirm my expectation, so just because we didn't discuss it on Monday. And you made mention of the quality of the financial statements that we review on a regular basis. So we, as you know, like each, each meeting, when we come together, we approve the expenditure report and the revenue report subject to audit. And I think evidence of the quality of those reports is the fact that during the meeting on Monday, and just to confirm, Tom, the, the results of the audit did not have you book any adjustments or the, the finance team, did you book any adjustments as a result of the audit procedures performed?
No.
Right there, we may be no, I think adjustments.
So I think that, that's a, an important distinction in terms of what we see on a regular basis.
Tom, is that unique?
Is that unique, Tom?
Um, it shouldn't be, but yes. It is unique nowadays, but it shouldn't be, but it is.
Yeah. Speaks to the quality that Becky and her department do every day, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the team, the financial team is very strong. I'm so like fortunate to have the people working in the department that we have right now. I can't say enough about Elena Daco, who's the Regional Financial Coordinator, Sonny Cox, who's our, our audit, or sorry, our accountant. Well, she was an auditor at one point. And then also Caroline Willard, who's our Finance and Operations Administrator. I think we all work very well together, and they're hardworking, and they have great attention to detail, and they care.
Also our Assistant Treasurer.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And our treasurer, we do have that.
Christine Tagg, yes.
Christine Tagg, you know, is behind the scenes. She's our checks and balance. An important aspect of the work that we do.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you very much, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you, Tom.
Any questions throughout the year, though, that they, that they, I think?
We, we hope not to.
Well said.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Have a good night.
Bye.
Then we are on to the Superintendent's Report to the Committee, starting with the Principal's Report. What, what? Sorry. Thank you so very much. Okay, we are going to need a vote to approve this audit. Are there any questions? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved by John.
Seconded.
Seconded by Matt. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Now we're going to go to the Superintendent's Report, and now we're going to go to the Principal's Report.
Turn it over to Principal Bevan.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone, and we have a few, we have Cass will be presenting, and then we'll have Michelle Kaelin, who we're excited to have present to tonight. So we're going to kick it over to Cass to give us a student report.
Thank you. So this is a very busy month, but I'll try to keep it quick. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions. So for school updates to start, there are eight students in the Writing Center who submitted an AI research paper for a national publication, Jazz 1 and 2, won silver medals at MAJA, and then are performing at the state festival. There was a new Harbinger print edition, which you all received, and it's on your desks in front of you if you didn't get one at the last meeting. For the sports update, there were six seniors that played.
Excuse me. Could you say a little more about that AI paper?
Yes. So the Algonquin Writing Center, I'm one of the members who helped write the paper, but it's aiming to incorporate artificial intelligence into peer tutoring to allow for students who have things such as learning disabilities like dyslexia that may need extra grammar support or issues with translation, to have solid translation tools and grammar assistance to help them out during sessions.
Sounds like an excellent use of AI.
Yes.
Approved use.
For the sports update, there were six seniors who played in the boys hockey CMAS All-Stars game. Girls hockey went to the Division II State Semifinals with 16 total wins, and junior player Betsy Burtonazi got the 2024 Boston Bruins Sportsmanship Award for her performance. The ski championship racers placed eighth, 15th, 16th, and 22nd. Girls track won a school relay record and went to nationals, where a freshman placed first. And further, there was spring sports parent night this week, along with registration and tryouts, which are ongoing into the spring season. For school-wide celebrations, for Ramadan, students who observe are have places inside the school, including the library, where they can pray during the day. For World Language Week, students and teachers from different parts of the world who speak different languages were able to give morning announcements in different languages, along with the English version in the mornings. The 20, Class of 2027 sold goodie bags for St. Patrick's Day, and the library always has its books for events such as Women's World History Month. For other school news, there is an MCAS trial for students, there's a career exposition tomorrow, and for new course registration, the Algonquin Writing Center and the Harbinger, students are able to go into classes and present about their work, and encouraged to sign up for those courses. The World of Difference gave their March presentations, the, those were on bias and anti-bullying, and the school play performed last Thursday and Friday. There was the robotics competition, which is this week, I believe, and last week, they had a night where they had a party, basically, big event where they displayed their robot in action for the first time for community members. For recent and upcoming events, the Creative Writing Club is having a trivia night this Friday. There is the United States One Essay Night, of course, as Ms. Sonny presented. There's a cultural festival on the 27th, so next Wednesday, for all different students and community groups, which will be performing. And the Algonquin Center held a Write for a Cause event where students advocated for and fundraised for Doctors Without Borders. And the GSA held a pins event, creating pride pins for across the school. For other school news, there were a bunch of presentations. So the International Journalists, of course, for AP Human Geography students, as well as Monk Creative and Mr. B., who went into public speaking courses. For AP Lit, US2, and World History courses, they also all had presenters. One was from Poland, and one is a teacher out of the school who went into the AP Lyrature classes to present about a topic within, reading about books from, translations from Brazil that are not previously talked about and are very, very recent, as in the last couple months being created. And the Student Advisory Committee has done work with Enviro Projects, collaborating to get State Senator Jamie Eldridge to co-sponsor a bottle of oil, starting composting, which is the goal for later this spring, collecting over 11,000 pounds of plastic in the past three years. And now we're getting a 48-inch bench donated to the school in honor of the collaborative work. Nextrex is donating it based on students' excellence in advocating for climate advocacy.
Yeah.
For other work, we're doing stuff for civic engagement, including with elections and town meetings. The Student Council is currently planning Carnival for next year, and as a committee, we went, attended the Mass Civics Learning Coalition Meeting, which was all about student advocacy and work with school committees. For future plans, we're hoping to put out the mental health survey. We've been working with Ms. Duggan on implementing NARCAN training into health classes, helping some middle school students adjust to student government as they exit eighth grade, and also we've been connecting with other student representatives, including Westboro for the Compost Initiative and Framingham for the NARCAN Initiative. So that's great collaborative work between schools. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Is that all? Well, there's a lot. There's some more.
And great. Excellent.
I asked Cass to be succinct tonight, not that she isn't always succinct, but did a great job, and we always have so many wonderful things happening around our school.
It's hard to be succinct when there is that much.
I know.
There's about 20 more events, I think, I did not discuss either. It was great work.
That's a lot going on.
Can I just ask, what's Monk?
That was in a public speaking class. He.
It's a he?
No, that was, that's a company this gentleman works for, or, he's an entrepreneur. And he came and talked about how public speaking, how he uses public speaking every day in the public speaking class.
Entrepreneurship as well. Both him and Mr. B., who's the other presenter, they both work a lot with DECA on those kinds of skills, and so that was bringing it to more students in a bigger setting.
Got it. I just didn't know if it was an Algonquin thing, and I was like, never heard of that one.
It's a business. I think this entrepreneur brought it forward.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Cass. Well done.
Thank you, Cass.
So thank you and good evening, everyone, again. Tonight, we are going to start with, first, I'd like to introduce you, I don't think we're introducing because you've heard about or met Michelle Kaelin before. So Michelle Kaelin is our Career Exploration and Innovation Leader. She came on board in the fall and has really hit the ground running and brought a lot to us, and she's going to tell us all about that now.
Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of start with how I got started here. Obviously, walking into a brand-new position, I wanted to get a good sense of where we are as a district and where we want to be going, kind of the direction we want to be heading in. So I did spend a lot of time talking to a lot of people, department heads, administrators, getting a real sense of what we're doing well here at Algonquin in terms of career exploration. And I spoke to eight to 10 other districts as well to learn about what kind of work they're doing in their schools, with whom and why and how and all of that. So a lot of time researching and reading to kind of get a sense of. and reading to kind of get a sense of where we want to be going and what would be the best course of action. One of the things I did to that end is created a Google form for community partners to complete, to let us know how they want to, might want to engage with our students, whether that says guest speakers, all the way up to hosting an intern. And so that's something that we've been putting out in all of our emails and sharing on social media and have gotten a really good response for. In looking at the kinds of programs we want to pursue, one of the things I really identified was kind of the lack of a job shadow program. And that's not something a lot of high schools do in a formal way, from my research. But in thinking, in kind of thinking strategically about how we go about that, I, you know, talked with the Guidance Office. They do some great work around career assessments with our 10th graders. And speaking with Lisa Connery, we kind of honed in on the fact that we could move that assessment piece and that research piece a little bit earlier in sophomore year to then springboard into a job shadow option for students the second semester of their sophomore year and then continuing on through high school. So that's something we're hoping to kind of launch next year, so that the Guidance Office will be doing those workshops with the 10th graders, I believe in December is kind of what they identified, so that the students can then have that as a springboard. And then I'm also developing the job shadow program structure, as well as an internship program structure. That would be an option for juniors and seniors. It would be semester-long internships. And this summer, I'm going to be launching a small pilot summer internship program as well. So maybe just with a couple of students to sort of see how that process all works out. So I'm really excited about that. And then finally, we have a couple of other events going on. Tomorrow, there is a career expo that Sean and I have been working on with the Marlboro Chamber of Commerce, the Marlboro Economic Development Corporation, and five other high schools. We've all kind of collaborated. There's a career expo tomorrow at the Solomon Pond Mall, where students are going to be able to hear from professionals in seven different industry clusters and learn about careers in those clusters. I believe you are coming. So we're taking 30 students from Algonquin to that. I'm excited about that. Early April, I'm going to be taking about 10 students to a construction and trade expo, also in Marlboro. And at the end of April, there is another event called Senior Scoop that is being put on by the Blackstone Valley Hub and Central Mass Hire, in order to really focus on students who don't have a plan yet after high school. So they're not planning to go to college. They don't quite have a job yet, but so kind of give them that safety that there will be employers there and programs there, employers that are looking to hire high school students right out of high school. So I'll be bringing a small group of students there as well. And I know Cass mentioned the Monk one. So I also put out a form, a Google form to teachers, in case they were interested in having a guest speaker come into their class, to speak about their careers or some, some link to the course content. So the reason that Monk Creative one came about is because Katie Salt, who teaches public speaking courses, reached out, looking for somebody to come in to talk about how they use public speaking in their career. And so that's, I was able to make that connection for her in the classroom. And also working with the Early Childhood Education Teacher Season Use, we created a panel, I think it was just a couple of weeks ago, it seems like, a long time ago, of about four professionals, because she wanted to highlight some of the careers that students could go into working with children that are not in the education space. So we had an SLP, a pediatric nurse practitioner, a photographer, and a therapist. And we're going to be doing another panel in a couple of weeks as well to highlight a few other professions. So kind of trying to hit students in a variety of ways.
Yes.
I have a comment and then a question. First of all, thank you so much for this presentation. I think that this is something that will really, really benefit the students here in Algonquin. And I guess the question I have is, and this is probably Principal Bevan as well, is how do you anticipate any changes in our schedule or scheduling requirements that you might need to actually execute?
Yeah.
Execute this.
So we've talked a lot about that in the last few weeks. So our bell schedule is a very, it is not conducive to working, having students work outside of the building. It rotates in this fully natural way and outside of a Monday through Friday kind of footprint. And that is really not real conducive to employers who want, who would love to have an intern, but they don't want to have an intern who shows up at different parts of different days without regularity. So we worked really hard on this in the last few weeks and our department heads helped us fine-tune it. And we have a schedule. We are very confident it will work and it will require students to have a space in their day where they can have it dedicated to the work of the internship. And on a fixed part of the Monday through Friday schedule, they'll be able to leave early and teachers will be flexible about them coming and going. And it'll be on the students to make up the work that they miss. So it basically requires a little bit of flexibility for a maximum amount of benefit, while still retaining the benefits of our rotating bell schedule, which we're happy with, kids like and teachers like. So really, there's a real incompatibility between our bell schedule and the internship program. And we feel like we found a way to get that square peg to fit in the round hole by being a little bit flexible and a little bit innovative. And I think we're pretty happy with how it came about.
In terms of hours requirement, it works out to roughly four hours per week. So we're not talking big numbers. So if a student wants per week and leave after a couple of blocks, that satisfies that four hours. Yeah.
I agree.
This is a fabulous presentation. Thank you for your work. Well done. Question for you. How did you determine what the 30, who the 30 students were going to be that get to go to Solomon Pond Mall?
Yeah, well, Sean put out an email to all the parents, all parents and students, juniors and seniors, and they had to complete the form.
And just to let you know, we're posting a little bit. Last year, we had five kids complete, participated in this exact event. And this year, we have 30. And so we're just expanding it and building it out a little bit. And we're really excited about it.
Not just because we're giving them lunch.
Yeah, we are. We're feeding them this year. It was the big feedback last year. So we're excited. Tomorrow, we're going to be spending the day there tomorrow. Cass will be able to report out on that account.
And just also just shout out to Principal Bevan. This was his idea last year. So he spent a tremendous amount of time organizing and planning for the inaugural event. And he was so thrilled to have Michelle join the team. I created a foundation, created a foundation to build upon.
Well, thank you. And I also just want to name check that our fellow principals in the other five schools are all participating in their facilitating groups. So really, it is a heavy, I wouldn't say it's a heavy lift, but it's one we're all invested in. So the principals of those schools participate and lead the groups on it. I don't know that that will be the Model Wees forever, but it's really, I think, signifies the investment that each of the schools has, has in this event. And the industry partners are pretty excited about it.
The Chamber of Crime and Crime Pals.
Yeah, it's a good partnership. Not done too much of that kind of thing before.
Yeah, and these summer internships sound like they could be wildly popular. I hope on both sides of the coin.
Yeah. Yeah, we're excited. We have a lot of good things on the horizon. We're excited about it. Well, thank you, Michelle.
Well done.
Oh, sorry.
Only because I've heard of innovation pathways in other schools and so on, but is there any curriculum connections that may, well, I mean, I realize you're building this as you're going this year, but are there any, like, the high school already has the fabulous concentrations that students have. Is there any, any, you know, future looking at how curriculum might play into, you know, being developed within this?
Yeah, that's a, you're like reading our minds. So the Algonquin Business Concentration is this really tremendous pathway and a kind of a blueprint for that kind of work. It's the only one that we have. It's a student who takes a certain number of business classes and then does a capstone experience. That's the kind of thing we'd like to promote. And what we're looking at is maybe someday expanding that out across the rest of the building, maybe even interdepartmentally. So, and one of the things we're looking at is DESI's innovations pathways areas as a bit of a roadmap for how to do that.
That's great.
So are you talking about the kind of thing where like senior year, maybe you would take part of the year to pursue some, some sort of capstone project?
I think that's already happened, that's been happening in the, with this Algonquin Business Concentration. But what this might look like is a student who's particularly strong in, I don't know, the area of communications. It might be in some English, some writing, but maybe also in social media marketing and maybe in video production or something. We would create something that honors the fact that they've, they've really excelled in those areas. And then they would create a capstone experience that might be an internship or maybe something else. So the, that would be kind of replicating some of the success of the ABC and then mapping it out over other departments. This is, this would take several years to develop and to really have a good plan together for. But I think we have some inertia. And I think once we see some of these internships come through and be successful, I think that will give us even more, more inertia to develop something like what, you know, what Sean's referencing and what I'm talking about.
Sounds great.
Exciting stuff.
So I'll just add that a lot of great conversations and discussions. And I think that one of the conversations I know the committee has had over the past several years, and I know Sean and Michelle and the team are having, is really aligning that junior and senior experience to what their future will look like. So as they head into college or the world of, you know, work, that, you know, the structured day of, you know, X number of periods a day, aligning it to more what, what their future will hold in terms of their freshman year in college.
Something I must add is that, talking to a lot of high schools, the internships tend to be reserved for seniors, essentially, at the end of their high school experience. And so one of my goals was to try to think about how can we bring career exploration to students earlier, so that, you know, they're not making these decisions about college or what's next, and then having the experience that may affect that decision-making. So that's why we're looking towards sophomores and then having internships available to juniors as an option as well.
That sounds great to me, because, you know, even further down the path, from what I understand, it's, can be difficult for college freshmen to get an internship their first summer. So if you have internship experience under your belt going in, I would think that would give you a leg up.
Well, thank you, Michelle. Any other questions?
We will keep you posted. And thank you, Michelle. Well done.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I will just touch on the next thing briefly. We will be hearing a lot more about it as our data comes in from the Metro West Adolescent Health Risk Behavior Survey. So I thought I would just take just a quick moment to share, as we are doing, getting that big data set in, which will be coming in in the next month, just to touch on it. We do a lot of different things and we just wrapped up the second bullet on here to identify and do some early detection and intervention on a variety of fronts to keep, make sure that our students are, are safe and that we're identifying the ones who, who might need our, our help. So I, I think we've mentioned it many times. We've done the Signs of Suicide Program in Grades Nine and Eleven. This is the first year we've done it. That means all students have had that, have had that experience in the curriculum. But also then we do a screener that helps to identify students who might be struggling. Just in the last two weeks, all of our teachers completed a social emotional health screener for one segment of their students. And that gives us both granular data on every kid in the building, but also trend line data about how all of our students, just to have a more broader impression, how their social emotional health is doing in areas we want, we need to focus on. We do an expert drug and alcohol screening. All schools in the Commonwealth do. The same something reporting app allows students or adults or anybody in the community to do, to report if they have a concern about a student's health or well-being or, or something troubling about them. And those tips do come in. That's our anonymous tip line. And then, of course, we do traditional, traditional detection efforts related to like vision, hearing, postural screening, BMI, those kind of things. So these are just like, usually what I'm talking about instructional, but this is something that is just always operating in the kind of background for us and always provides a lot of data to help us just make sure our kids are healthy and safe.
I'm sorry. You, you, you screen kids for alcohol? What, what is the drug?
For what? I'm sorry.
How, how does a drug and alcohol screening work?
Sure. So all of our sophomores participate in a very brief interview where they're asked about their, if they take, have taken drug or alcohol usage. And in doing that, they're, first of all, you sometimes get information that they self-report, but also the very act of asking those questions. The research seems to show that that, that very act of asking the questions has a curtailing effect on students' drug and alcohol usage. So I am gonna, and then one other thing just worth reporting out. I know this group always, we come to you and ask you to approve overnight trips. Our Harbinger students just went to New York City. This was last weekend. And they came home with some hardware that I just wanted to share with you. And I will invite them at some point here. They won the Gold Crown, which is awarded for overall excellence in either print or digital student publications, chosen by a panel of judges and working as a team. I have the actual, the actual item right back here. I don't know how to, you know, overstate how important this award is. There are just not that many schools that even qualify to compete for this award. And we're one of the very few school newspapers in the whole country that, that achieved this level of recognition. And it doesn't happen even for a school. As newspaper as strong as ours, we don't win it every year. So this was a real banner year and worth, worth noting. And the kids had a great time, you know, at this trip. And they brought home, you know, this really wonderful award. And it's worth noting about that. So. Any questions?
No. You've covered everything.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Actually, for DECA, do you know how many winners there were? Was it 22?
That's a good question. From 22 or 24, we have students and they're heading to LA. You might recall that you approved that trip. So those are the students who subsequently, since our last meeting, qualified to participate. I can get that number. But it's 22 or 24. I think we approved 28 and, and that number is over. So that's very exciting. I'll report out on that as well.
Okay, then on to enrollments.
Yeah, so in your packet is the enrollment report as of February 20th, 2024. So no variances from the last report that was provided. And also in your packet are the standard financial reports, the FY24 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report, Statement of Revenue, and the FY25 School Committee Approved Budget. And I will turn it over to Becky to talk about those.
So the FY24 Monthly General Fund Report, I can report that the budget is holding steady, that really, thankfully, the FY24 budget remains uneventful. At the end of February, we did have $655,992 remaining, or 2.47%. The previous month, we had $658,744, or 2.48. So really, it was a difference of about $2,700 from January to February. We will be presenting at the April meeting our plan for the end of the fiscal year. And also, we'll be preparing some projections for E and D as well, as we look forward to closing out FY24. But really not much to report on the Monthly General Fund Report. Do you want me to move forward with revenue or do you want to?
Move forward with revenue and then we'll.
Okay, all right. So in terms of the FY24 Revenue Report, you may recall back in November, I had reported that we had received a larger than anticipated sum of money from the Department of Revenue as part of our charter school tuition receipts. Since that time, we've been working with DESI and DOR to find out what happened and what this money is for. And we have since learned from DOR that it was a mistake on their part, that they overpaid us for the charter school. Our, when we initially began FY24, our projections in this category were $9,149 in projected income. That was based on the preliminary figures and based on FY23 student enrollment. In January, we did receive some revised projections where there were two fewer charter school students at that point. So they revised those down to 5,940. Well, the problem is, we've received about $58,000 from DOR. So this past month, we did have to issue a repayment to DOR in the amount of $52,261. So now we did have to issue a repayment to DOR in the amount of $52,261. So, now we are, we are even with the Department of Revenue and with DESI on our charter school tuition payment. So, that number is reflected on that report. The other piece that I want to report on is that our investment income projection has increased again. So, we had moved it up to $100,000, and we are now projecting about $150,000 in interest revenue for FY24, again due to the hard work of Chris Tagg, our district treasurer, and working with Unibank and making sure that our interest rates are very competitive with what we're seeing in the industry. And then, lastly, the only other adjustment I want to point out is that there was an adjustment of $530 in the Student Activity Fee Line item, and that was a result of a January deposited that should have been classified to the Student Activity Agency account and not the fee account. So, that's part of the work that we do as we're reconciling accounts that was picked up, and so it was moved into the correct account. But overall, not much else to report on the revenues.
Okay. Any questions?
Just an example of those strong controls.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept the monthly expenditure report and revenue report until audited.
Seconded. Moved by Matt, seconded by Paul. Any questions? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Okay, moving on to.
Warrant articles.
Okay. Well, we're not going to, I'm sorry, FY25 School Committee.
So, in your packet is the FY25 line item budget.
Okay, that's it.
For your review.
[laughing]
So, and then also in your packet is a document that lists the warrant articles for the region. So, the Southborough Town Meeting is this Saturday, begins at 10 o'clock. So, that is our first milestone approval process. There are two warrant articles, one for the overall budget, and the second for establishing a regional capital stabilization fund. So, the, some work has been done on the presentation. We are fine tuning the presentation for Saturday. The regional, the capital stabilization fund from the Southborough Board, Slough Board, was not supported. It was two, 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 four, and three opposed. And then, the advisory also did not support the capital stabilization fund. So, we do have a bit of an uphill battle in terms of making sure that our presentation is clear, succinct, and makes a good argument to town meeting members to support. And so, we are working on that and have to answer any questions about the warrant articles.
No questions? Okay, then moving on to the FY25 Budget Book.
So, in your packet is the FY25 Budget Book. So, again, a tremendous amount of work from the Finance Department and the HR Department, all the departments at Central Office, and Cheryl Lepre is kind of the lead project manager to collect those and create the budget booklet. And it's an important document for the community to really understand the details behind the budget. And if there is a question, most likely that question can be answered by a document in that, in that budget booklet.
Well, if Cheryl's in charge, it'll be perfect.
Yes, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, then we're moving on to Old Business and the Athletic Complex Project Update.
Sure. Keith want to give an update?
Sure. I do, do like sharing that now that the weather has changed, our contractor is back to put the final touches on Phase One. So, this week actually has been quite busy. The amphitheater is almost fully constructed and complete. They had some pieces that needed to be remanufactured, but they are. So, if you came in when there was daylight, it looks, it looks pretty nice, and it's getting its final touches. So, we're very excited about the amphitheater nearing completion. I'm also happy to report that the press box and grandstands are also near completion. We have some connectivity that still needs to connect, whether it be with our electrician or, you know, some of the different pieces of equipment for the press box. But short of that, the structure itself is pretty much there, and I believe by the end of this week, the elevator will be in place. The structure for the elevator is there, but the physical car that will be going up and down is not, and we do anticipate that within a few short days. So, coupled with that, our contractor, DW, is doing some site work that need to be finished up, the dispersment of soil that had been collected during the fall months is being distributed appropriately into our satisfaction. And we still are in contact with our contractor on a daily basis around, you know, what they're planning to do that day, and, you know, and Mike Gorman's been helped to facilitate that work. So, it is coming to a close, the first phase of the project. When we look to the additional phases, the next thing that's on the horizon is that Asbit Valley Regional Technical High School will be here by mid-April to start the exterior renovations to the old snack shack in the maintenance building. They anticipate completing one of those structures this spring and then come back when school is back in session in September and finish off the second one, so that'll be buttoned up and closed up probably by about mid-October or so is what they are anticipating that schedule to be. So, we are excited to have them on campus and to have that started up pretty soon. In fact, he might try to get here next week, but to be determined. He might, but definitely by the middle, middle of April. And then, the last piece that's worth reporting is that we are ready, or we're very close to be ready, to go out to bid for the amenities building. Our architect, RGB, has been finalizing their drawings and getting it bid ready. We have a couple of questions from them that we need to answer, but we anticipate that the timeline, the latest timeline was submitted to us yesterday, I believe, or the day before. And we've accepted it, and it does look like it's going to be able to move us forward. So, we should be going out to bid within two weeks.
April 3rd.
April 3rd, which would then give about a month or so of time for bids to come in, and then we'll, we'll make decisions about that moving forward. But I, I do anticipate that work being done over the summer after school is out. So, with no more snow, we should be able to get going early in June. So, absolutely, we'll be complete before the start of the school year, which is, which is very exciting. So, I believe that's all. Are there any other pieces you want to add, Greg?
I would add to the amenities building, the cost estimates that our architects are projecting are $150,000 more than what we originally anticipated. We won't know the final cost until the bids come in, but we are coming up with a plan to mitigate any additional costs that we were not anticipating, and we will present that at the April School Committee for the committee's review and approval.
Is the reason inflation? Supply chain?
I think.
Time.
We're not sure. We're hoping that the construction, the actual bids that come in are actually closer to what we anticipate back. This is the architect's estimate of what the project will cost. So, all of the above, inflation, construction costs.
Perhaps I had missed it before, but Asbit Valley will be involved in doing, had that always been the plan?
It was, yes. They, I connect, I reached out to them about this time last year to see whether what, we could get into their schedule. They had done, they have done projects in the community before.
Yes, they have, yeah.
They are currently working at the Senior Center in Southborough, and we were able to have this be their next project. So, we are very excited about that.
And how do the fees work when?
We're able, we cover, we get a cost estimate for the supplies that will be needed, the materials, but then, but all the labor is free.
Including the teachers?
Correct.
Okay. That's a bonus.
Can you just explain just the difference between the snack shack and the amenities building?
Sure. I knew that. I thought that's what you were talking about. So, prior to the project, the, especially for football games, the snack shack, if you're, the west side of the football field is where snacks were given, boosters had their snack shack, and that was the most optimal place. So, that actually, one of the main reasons, I believe, and Paul might be able to confirm this, is, you know, they had a view of the field. Whereas, if you use the amenities building, or it's currently structured, the windows for service point towards, more towards the soccer fields or towards the baseball fields versus towards the football fields. So, that had always been kind of how boosters had operated, although still the bathroom facilities were in that amenities building. That's right beyond the tennis courts here.
So, it will become storage for athletics.
Correct.
So, it will be a storage.
It'll be repurposed.
The, the.
Old snack shack.
Former snack shack will now be, we need to start calling it a storage building.
Okay.
Storage one and storage two.
So, when you said that the Asbit kids are going to be working on the snack shack or the facilities building, they're both storage.
They are.
So, it's irrelevant. So, basically, you're confident that the amenities building, which would be the new snack shack, will be ready for fall.
Correct.
Great. But does the snack shack, does the amenities building open during baseball games, and now they don't be able to watch baseball and soccer games?
The amenities building?
Yeah.
The, the old snack shack. So, the amenities building will be done, as anticipated, to be completed in August?
Right, but the, the amenities building, in its current state, is looking at the baseball and soccer field.
So, that's never.
It's no longer going to look at the baseball. It's going to look at the football field.
Yep.
But now, what about the soccer and baseball people?
They'll have to walk around the corner.
It was never opened during those games.
Never opened during the games.
It's pretty much run by the boosters of football.
The current concession stand in the McDonald's building doesn't have any, you know, any appliances, any refrigeration, so it's been not a helpful space for concessions.
For spring sports like baseball, and we just don't get the kinds of crowds that just obligate us to, or makes sense to have a big concession stand. There's just not a lot of call for concessions at that, at those events, whereas in football, you get a thousand, 2,000 people at an event, and you do.
Yeah, I was just curious about the plan for, like, the boosters want this? Or, because, I was just curious, because I know in the past, there's been issues of people sneaking into games, and so I thought that having the snack area closer to the game stopped that challenge.
So, the, the reason why boosters created the snack shack, which will become a storage shed, was because it wasn't outfitted, the current, the amenities building where the restrooms are currently were facing the wrong direction. They didn't have what they needed to serve. So, actually, this, the reason why we're shifting is because it's, we're outfitting it for concessions, changing the location of the windows, and it has nothing to do with boosters. We are working on a plan for entrance and exit to games, and we'll incorporate the new amenities building upgrade in that plan.
And do you have any idea about the timing of the completion of the new snack shack?
August.
Okay.
So, the old snack shack will be converted into a storage shed this, this spring? The amenities, amenities building, reconfiguring the concession stands will be completed in time for the fall season.
And when will that begin? I was just trying to figure out with carnival planning, because they.
Oh, yes.
Oh, after school gets out.
After, okay.
The summer project.
Yeah. So, we have a new updated timeline from the architects, and I think you'll be safe.
Thank you.
And the last thing I'll quickly comment on, there is a Phase Three, which is really to look at the landscaping, looking at adding trees and really making it look landscaped while aesthetics, using natural trees and shrubs, and really, that's the next phase, and creating patio spaces for gathering, creating a place for the new flagpole. So, that is Phase Three. That is not budgeted, and that we are working on potentially fundraising for.
Any other questions? Okay. Then, moving on to policy development or distribution, none at this time. Audience sharing, also none at this time, because there's no audience. Personnel. Distribution of your personnel report is in your packet?
Yes, and I'll just make one general comment, that is Julie Doyle retires on March 28th, which is a week from this Friday. So, we will be inviting her back to a future school committee meeting, as well as Rhonda Webb, who doesn't retire until June 30th, to just provide an opportunity for the committee to thank them for their service.
Which they deserve much.
I have one question on the personnel report. So, Jason Lessard, is that a resignation or a leave of absence?
He took a leave of absence, which required notice that he was going to be returning. We did not receive the notice, so it is now a resignation.
And communications, letter from Algonquin Regional High School Librarian, Kim Honey. Oh, and there it is. That's that community reads, which we've heard a lot about. And approval of bills and payrolls, we do that online. And agenda items for next month. Oh, it's going to be a busy month. School choice discussion, Southborough Town Meeting recap, World Language Department presentation, student handbook, reappoint district treasurer and assistant treasurer, school choice public hearing and vote, social emotional learning presentation. That's, oh, these are now May.
So, it's a combination of April and May.
Okay, all right. So, so, yes. So, the, everything up to student handbook is April. And then, reappoint district treasurer, school choice public hearing, social emotional learning presentation, and program of studies is all May.
So, the one ask that I have is the school choice, public hearing, and presentation. Typically, we do it over two meetings. If it's the will of the committee, I could do a presentation and hold the public hearing in one meeting.
Does anybody have any objection?
Greg, I, sorry if I didn't, that I didn't catch this earlier. World Language is presented last year, and I have social studies as being presenting next month. I'll confirm that with Cheryl Lepre and with Brittany Burns.
I'd really like to hear some social studies.
I'm sorry?
I'd be excited to hear.
Okay. And we're excited to talk about social studies. They do a lot of wonderful things. So, I will firm that up.
Brittany, do you have any?
Potentially, if it's a good idea, I will touch base with Ms. Burns and see if there are any students who'd like to join. Like, tomorrow night, we have our social studies, honor societies inaugural group induction.
Nice. And social emotional learning presentation is okay for May?
That is in May.
Okay. All right. That all being said, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Sean, seconded by?
Second.
Paul. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. We are adjourned.